Our pledge, the American flag with Mr. Beebe and our pledge to the Texas flag, Mr. Hollinger.
Heavenly Father, it's us again. We're asking for your guidance. We need your guidance in decision-making necessary to ensure that the success of this organization is a top priority. And Father, we can only do that if you equipped us with information and with the motivation and the love for this organization. Go before us and prepare the path for us to travel so that we won't make, so that we can make as few mistakes as possible. We love you, Lord, and most importantly, you love us. These blessings we ask and receive in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to the national flag.
Our pledge to the United States of America. And so we declare the court which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in the pledge to the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas.
One nation under God, one indivisible.
First order of business is to consider approval of the minutes of the July board meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made. And second, questions? If you favor that motion, you signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item is opportunity for a member of the public to speak to the board. Keep your address, please, within three minutes and come to the podium if you wish at this time. Seeing none. Next item is the oath of office of two officers chief. If you would present them to us, please. When we ask you to repeat after this oath of office, first thing is to state your name.
Joseph Decker.
David Zorris.
You solemnly swear an affirm. You solemnly swear an affirm that I will faithfully execute.
No, faithfully execute.
The duties of the officer police officer.
Oh, yes.
I'm not going to start over. So far, you're agreeing on all this. This is the Central Texas College District.
Central Texas College District.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
Will best do your building.
Best do our building.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
Laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the rules and regulations promulgated.
Rules and regulations promulgated.
By the CTC Board of Trustees.
By the CTC Board of Trustees.
So help me God.
So help me God.
There you go.
Now time for the chancellor's report.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees and the administration for the wonderful lunch and the gifts that I got today and recognize my two daughters, Kelly and Angela, and my wife Nancy. This might be my last board meeting, so it's going to be a good one anyway. Thank you all very much. Videos and pictures, what do we have for pictures? First one, I think, is Julie Starkey, perhaps?
Good afternoon to the board. First, I'm going to talk to you guys about, we've had a lot of exciting things happening in preparation for the new semester. This is new student orientation. We held both a virtual and an in-person new student orientation. The virtual one happened August 2nd. I'm not going to forget my numbers. We had 145 students who logged on to our online NSO all over the United States. It was pretty cool. And we did it in the evening, so we started at 5:00 and we had faculty and staff who stuck with us until almost 9:00. And students stuck with us that long. So it was a great, great, where we were preparing them to get ready for the start of the semester. But it was really cool that we had students from all over and it really showed you, we really are a global campus when you saw something like that. And that's the first picture. Dr. Angela Reese is in the corner, you can kind of see her, and she's talking to the students that logged on about how to use Blackboard. So that was a picture of that. All of the other pictures were, these are for our in-person new student orientation, which happened this last Thursday, August 17th. And it was huge. We kind of had to regroup because we had so many people register. We had over 400 students register for the program. That, we knew that many wouldn't actually show up and didn't. We ended up with 272 students that showed up and 35 family members. It was huge. And so at the last minute, we're, we're using y'all's room in here, we're doing all kinds of stuff. But this kind of shows you some of the pictures. We started the day with a showcase with all the academic departments and then I think the other picture is Dr. Carter came and welcomed the students and so that was exciting. I think she had a packed house, I think you would agree. And then we also rotated the students through a lot of breakout sessions just to get them ready for, for this week. So it was really exciting. So that was new student orientation. So we can go to the next slide. And as you guys know, yesterday was our first day of classes. There's some pictures of that. It was so neat to see the buzz of campus and student life reemerging. We have people on the mall, in the libraries, in our classes. As I've shared before, we are going into our weeks of welcome. We don't have one week of welcome, we have two at CTC. This first week, we really work on getting the students acclimated to the campus, making sure they know where things are, how to get a parking pass, any kind of help we can give them. I know on Thursday, we're doing a virtual Q and A so that they can come and they can ask any question they want. No question is a dumb question. So we do a lot of things like that in that first week. Second week, we'll move to a few more fun things. And our welcome bash is the 31st. So if you guys are around, stop by on August 31st and have some fun with us. All the academic departments will be there. We'll have a DJ, inflatables, games, and all kinds of fun things. So more pictures to come in the next couple of weeks about all of these things, but that's what's happening. Any questions?
Thank you, Julie.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dean Starkey. Dean Delion, come talk about wrenches to wheels.
Good afternoon, everyone. Continuing Education's Community Program, College for Kids, has partnered with Workforce Solutions of Central Texas via their Wrenches to Wheels Building Bikes and Building Skills Program. Participants were eight junior high students from our partners, Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Texas and KISD's communities in schools. Students learned problem-solving skills, patience and perseverance, mechanical skills, attention to details, and most importantly, independence and self-reliance. Students were surprised with getting to keep the bicycles and toolkits at no cost. One bike was donated to communities and schools to be given to a student in need. We look forward to participating in more programs that develop and encourage the minds of young students within our community as we start planning for summer 2024.
Thank you. Dr. Bach, come tell us about the police academy. Turn up the parking lot up there. Or Mark's parking lot.
I am happy to present with you the exciting slide of the month, a set of action photos involving our police cadets. And everything I'm about to show you is a simulation for training purposes only. And this is indeed a drill. So on the top left, the cadets are investigating a gang shooting. The cadets were responsible for processing the scene, identifying the clues, talking to the coroner, interviewing witnesses who were played by the other cadets. And the cadets utilized crime scene sketch. They completed a photographic log, prepared reports, processed physical evidence, and then presented the case for prosecution. In the top middle, the photo is of the reverse driving course. So the basic police officer cadets must pass two driving tests in order to complete the academy. The first test that you see here is the backing course, which must be completed in one minute. Time is calculated by the raw time plus five seconds for every cone that is knocked over. The top right photo is the precision driving course. So that's the second driving course, that's the second test, and that must be completed in four minutes. Time's calculated by the raw time, again, plus five seconds for each cone that is seizing the end of its life. And the course includes making 90-degree turns, J-turns, and a slow section. So if you're having flashbacks to driver's ed class, so am I. The bottom left, this group of cadets is investigating an apparent suicide that actually turned out to be a killing for insurance money. So a lot of drama going on over there. This simulation teaches the importance of handling evidence. The bottom row middle, so these cadets, nature has been working against them all the entire time. So during this latest round of training, the average temperature when they were out on the parking lot was 105 degrees. They went through over 300 bottles of water, 100 bottles of Gatorade, and believe it or not, a gallon of sunscreen. That's a lot of sunscreen.
You need to drink that.
And you may have heard the stat, and I verified that it's true, when they set up these driving courses, there are more than 1,000 cones out there. So next time you see them out there, you can impress your friends with that little back. And the bottom right, the cadets in this picture are investigating another victim of that gang shooting that we saw up top. And again, let me just say one more time, it is a simulation. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Bach. You did have, there were a lot of police cars out there. I don't know how many, but they were from all over, all over the central Texas area. Also, you had the bicycle police officers doing training, right?
Yes.
Because I saw 20 or 30 of them go by Dr. Carter's office and I'm looking out the window, where are they going? What's going on here? And they were doing their exercises and things.
Exercise and bike crime. You can't be too careful.
Bike crime, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I can police my report, sir.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you for your years of service to the institution. Mr. Barton, you have a July financial statement and investment report.
July financials and once again comparable to this time last year, maybe a little bit better when you throw in the incentive payments or consider that and you have funds. Rates are holding steady and forecast I see might possibly come down around 18 months, but right now we're having a pretty stable.
Questions? Thanks, sir. Did I skip one again?
No, it's required.
Board action. Oh, board action, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, I did skip something today. Is there a motion to approve?
Approved.
Second. Any discussion, questions? If you favor that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for keeping. Millboard. And now is the time for the budget presentation. Mr. Liberty.
Oh, remember, last week we discussed the proposed budget in some depth. And we also discussed the change that we made, which was the change that we talked about related to the insurance and the fact that our insurance quote and rates were up significantly. So the change that was made, as a reminder, we moved $960,000 from capital improvements into the insurance budget. That was the only change and is still the only change to the pro-bud that you had in front of you. You do have a copy, as I promised you, of the new organizational chart that Dr. Carter has prepared, as well as the chancellor's budget message, which will both be included in the final version. Most of y'all, it didn't take Mr. Wilkerson very long to learn that I was typed. I haven't printed another copy for y'all because there's a document that has to be signed that will go in the printed version, so I wasn't going to waste printing another set of copies the same way. So that's why you don't have an adjusted copy. But once we get the budget approved and reprinted, there'll be a copy for each of you at your next board meeting when you get your next packet of questions. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion to approve the budget?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Next item is the ad valorem tax rate.
Yes, sir. If you'll remember, also last week, we had to have the required meeting to propose a tax rate. And the tax rate that the administration recommended being proposed was the no new revenue rate of .0825 per hundred. And that is still the recommendation of the administration is to approve that.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made. Second, any questions, comments about the proposal for the ad valorem tax? If you favor the motion, you signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One, say no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next item is the $50,000 purchase. Which comes on us.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Chancellor Unoplos. I'm here to seek board approval of the 50K list. If you recall, the 50K list authorizes administration issue blanket purchase orders to vendors on the list of business services for purchases of 50,000 or more in the aggregate during the fiscal year beginning September 1, 2023. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Or a motion, second. If you favor that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It passes. And your next item is inter.
Yes, sir. So this is not a voting item, it's just informational. In accordance with the Texas Education Code, Section 44.031, the colleges require to submit to the board trustees an annual report identifying the amount, purpose, and disposition of any fees regarding the cooperative purchasing programs. As you can see in the list, the only fee we pay is to the Texas Comptrollers. The list of cooperatives has been adjusted. We had a couple that have changed and they're not compliant with the rules, so we've since eliminated them from the list. So now it's down to eight cooperatives that we work with.
Thank you for that.
Any questions?
No. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harmson, you have a recommendation for an option year of the Texas Materials Group.
Good afternoon. This is to seek approval for option period four for Texas Materials Group. This will be the fourth and the final option period for them. We look at using them for any types of asphalt and paving, patches, repair work, et cetera. Any major projects that we would do throughout the campus would actually come back to the board for approval. This is just to go ahead and continue to make improvements as we needed. So the recommendation is to approve option year number four for the Texas Materials Group.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Discussion, questions? If you favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Murphy.
Good afternoon. Last week, we discussed in detail our comprehensive insurance coverage is going for the 2324 academic year. This afternoon, we're seeking approval of our option year two with Alliant Insurance Services in an amount of $175,935. Are there any questions? Our recommendation is to approve it.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion been made. Second, any questions? If you favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You have another.
Yes, sir. This is for option year two for our contract with Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services in an amount of $480,274. Recommendation is to approve this second option year with AJG.
Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion been made. Second, any questions, discussion?
I have a question.
All right.
Is, will we have to come back for another change for that later on? Will the amount change or will it, is it going to stay?
For AJG, you have to state your signature.
Correct. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. If you favor the motion, you signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy, you have one more.
Yes, sir. Last week, we discussed in detail our option year two with BKCW. This here is for our property insurance coverage and professional police. Recommendation from the administration is to approve this option year two in the amount of $1.2 million.
Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Motion been made. Second, any questions or discussion about this motion?
Mr. Murphy, it stays the amount. It's not $1.2 million, it's $1 million.
Yes.
$1,200. $1,200,000.
Who made the motion?
Mr. Hollinger.
You okay with that change?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Thank you for pointing them out. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. I'd like the board to skip to item number 16. Is there any recommendation from any board member for any upcoming agenda items? Ms. Colley?
Just a continuation of just informing us about the registration, I mean, the number of students that are onboard and if there are any future changes to that.
Yep. Mr. Beebe?
Yes? Nothing.
Nothing. Thank you. Item 17, the board workshop for September will be the 19th at 1:00. Board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, the 26th at 1:00. Let's get back to items 15 and 14. We will deal with those in executive session. The time is 1:20. We'll go in executive session for those two items. One is a question of a proposal for emeritus status for Jim Unoplos, and the other is to hear a report from Dr. Garrett about board self-evaluation. If you are part of that, will join us in the board meeting. as a motion from the board. Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we establish an exception to policy and declare Chancellor Annapolis Chancellor Emeritus effective the 1st of September, 2023.
Your second. Any discussion, questions? If you favor that motion, you signify by saying aye. If you can't vote. Okay, that's all the nice things we're going to do for you. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So move.
All right. The second item was recommendations that we will present. Oh, I'm sorry, we're back. I almost got it right. We're back in session at 1:41. And the second item that we're dealing with is a recommendation that will come as a nominee, as a motion from the board. Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we establish an exception to policy and declare Chancellor Annapolis Chancellor Emeritus effective the 1st of September, 2023.
Your second. Any discussion, questions? If you favor that motion, you signify by saying aye. If you can't vote. Okay, that's all the nice things we're going to do for you. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So move.
All right. The second item was recommendations that we will present. Oh, I'm sorry, we're back. I almost got it right. We're back in session at 1:41. And the second item that we're dealing with is a recommendation that will come as a nominee, as a motion from the board. Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we establish an exception to policy and declare Chancellor Annapolis Chancellor Emeritus effective the 1st of September, 2023.
Your second. Any discussion, questions? If you favor that motion, you signify by saying aye. If you can't vote. Okay, that's all the nice things we're going to do for you. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So move.
All right. The second item was recommendations that we will present. Oh, I'm sorry, we're back. I almost got it right. We're back in session at 1:41. And the second item that we're dealing with is a recommendation that will come as a nominee, as a motion from the board. Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we establish an exception to policy and declare Chancellor Annapolis Chancellor Emeritus effective the 1st of September, 2023.
Your second. Any discussion, questions? If you favor that motion, you signify by saying aye. If you can't vote. Okay, that's all the nice things we're going to do for you. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So move.
All right. The second item was recommendations that we will present. Oh, I'm sorry, we're back. I almost got it right. We're back in session at 1:41. And the second item that we're dealing with is a recommendation that will come as a nominee, as a motion from the board. Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we establish an exception to policy and declare Chancellor Annapolis Chancellor Emeritus effective the 1st of September, 2023.
Your second. Any discussion, questions? If you favor that motion, you signify by saying aye. If you can't vote. Okay, that's all the nice things we're going to do for you. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So move.
All right. The second item was recommendations that we will present. Oh, I'm sorry, we're back. I almost got it right. We're back in session at 1:41. And the second item that we're dealing with is a recommendation that will come as a nominee, as a motion from the board. Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we establish an exception to policy and declare Chancellor Annapolis Chancellor Emeritus effective the 1st of September, 2023.
Your second. Any discussion, questions? If you favor that motion, you signify by saying aye. If you can't vote. Okay, that's all the nice things we're going to do for you. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So move.
All right. The second item was recommendations that we will present. Oh, I'm sorry, we're back. I almost got it right. We're back in session at 1:41. And the second item that we're dealing with is a recommendation that will come as a nominee, as a motion from the board. Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we establish an exception to policy and declare Chancellor Annapolis Chancellor Emeritus effective the 1st of September, 2023.
Your second. Any discussion, questions? If you favor that motion, you signify by saying aye. If you can't vote. Okay, that's all the nice things we're going to do for you. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So move.
All right. The second item was recommendations that we will present. Oh, I'm sorry, we're back. I almost got it right. We're back in session at 1:41. And the second item that we're dealing with is a recommendation that will come as a nominee, as a motion from the board. Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we establish an exception to policy and declare Chancellor Annapolis Chancellor Emeritus effective the 1st of September, 2023.
Your second. Any discussion, questions? If you favor that motion, you signify by saying aye. If you can't vote. Okay, that's all the nice things we're going to do for you. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So move.
All right. The second item was recommendations that we will present. Oh, I'm sorry, we're back. I almost got it right. We're back in session at 1:41. And the second item that we're dealing with is a recommendation that will come as a nominee, as a motion from the board. Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we establish an exception to policy and declare Chancellor Annapolis Chancellor Emeritus effective the 1st of September, 2023.
Your second. Any discussion, questions? If you favor that motion, you signify by saying aye. If you can't vote. Okay, that's all the nice things we're going to do for you. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So move.
All right. The second item was recommendations that we will present. Oh, I'm sorry, we're back. I almost got it right. We're back in session at 1:41. And the second item that we're dealing with is a recommendation that will come as a nominee, as a motion from the board. Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we establish an exception to policy and declare Chancellor Annapolis Chancellor Emeritus effective the 1st of September, 2023.
Your second. Any discussion, questions? If you favor that motion, you signify by saying aye. If you can't vote.